To order. I'll be going right down, but we're gonna start with the minutes from January fourteenth. Okay, so the minutes from January fourteenth, anybody have any questions, comments? Motion to approve January nineteenth minute, January fourteenth, second? Oh, is it favor?
Hi.
And I think I'm supposed to say, because I wasn't here.
Three zero over one.
Correct. And then, we're gonna hold up on warrants right now, Kathleen. We're gonna go to, so we can get you guys out of here, the presentation and vote to approve course additions to the Norton High School Program of Studies for two thousand nineteen twenty.
So, we have numerous course additions, so the individual faculty are here to speak a little bit further about what they're hoping you will approve of course additions. I'll start with yearbook, if that's okay. So, right now, yearbook is a club, and the problem with yearbook as a club is there's really not a lot of student participation. It's really pretty much singularly run by you, correct? And so, to have a yearbook course, you could have students more involved in the production of the yearbook, and have more of a voice and an input to the creation of the yearbook. Would you say that's accurate?
Yes, right now, it's pretty much the advisor does about ninety-five percent of the book, so it's lacking in a lot of content that could help these students, like more journalistic type stuff, and less just pictures on pages.
And I know another school when I was in Morewood, it was a class, and it's a semester class, correct?
Yeah, so the idea is to have it running both semesters, and just working on different aspects of the yearbook each semester.
I think it's a great idea. Gets kids more involved, and then they wanna see the outcome. I think it's a great idea.
Well, I have to tell ya, I'm excited by all the recommendations, and I'm really excited about this, because I think it's an opportunity for us to really grow the school culture around the kids doing things, which is something student voices, they do share. So, this is a great opportunity, not just to learn, and edit, and all of that, but also give them some individual opportunity to go out and go to a game, and take pictures, and bring that back, or go to an event, or that type of stuff. And I think we could, out of Central Office, help a little bit for the Communications Office, being able to give some support for that class as well, and be an opportunity for that office to work along with the Business Department and staff on how to best incorporate that. So, I think it's a great opportunity.
Which would be, I see it's one semester, but would it run both semesters? Or it's only second semester?
It would ideally run two semesters, 'cause what we're doing now is, in the fall semester, we do all of the portrait pages.
Okay.
And then, in the spring, we do like the sports, and then like graduation, and all of that stuff.
But a student would only take one semester of it? Or would they take two?
I was thinking they could take one, but have the option to take two, 'cause they would be working on different things, maybe yearbook one, yearbook two, or something like that.
Okay.
Now, this wouldn't affect like the distribution of the yearbooks in any way, like, we're just, we would still be just pre-prepping them for the printers and same deadlines.
Yep, so the distribution would still be the yearbook advisors coordinating that on their own with the distributor, you work with Herb Jones, and working out all of that type of information.
That was my only, as I was reading through the back, and I'm like, well, if they're prepping it in the second half of the year, I'll take this some sort of...
No, we have deadlines we have to meet, so it would be up to the yearbook advisor to make sure that these pages are being done by this time, and if it's not being done in the class, then the yearbook advisor would have to supplement.
So, just think of it this way, your most active students, and I say this in a very general statement, are involved with almost everything in any, and they also wanna see a yearbook, and be part of that yearbook. They don't have the time. So, by placing that time into the school day as part of an academic elective, which can help to make the seating here very meaningful, right, it can give them something to really work with, I think what it does is just ups the ante, and so now, you're gonna have a better quality, it's always a good quality, but you're gonna have a better quality, 'cause you're gonna have more opportunity to write, and to provide information than just pictures. We have a tendency, in a lot of our productions, to do a lot about sports, and we're a very big sports team, and that's a great thing, as you know, I love that. But we have a lot of clubs and activities that we just aren't being recognized at the same level for all of the stuff that they're doing, or the fine arts, or any of our other departments. So, I really am excited about this, and I hope it goes through, and that the kids decide to take it.
And all the courses tonight were unanimously approved by stakeholders.
So, I think what we'll have you do is just kinda go through all of them, and then we'll vote on all of them.
Okay, sounds good. So, the next one that I'll bring up is the Business Technology CVTE Introduction to Business course. So, this is a requirement, it's a state requirement in order for us to have the Chapter Seventy Four CVTE program. I'll just read from the document, it's an introduction to business. It's a semester-long exploratory course, open to grade nine and ten students interested in entering the pathway in the Business Technology Chapter Seventy Four program. The course will touch on a variety of topics, including business information systems, marketing, e-commerce, entrepreneurship, financial literacy, business ethics, social media, marketing, and green technology. It's a project-based course that will serve to gauge student interest in which pathway might be, might best suit their aptitudes, interests, and abilities. And Heather wants to talk a little bit more about that, she's here to do so. Do you have any questions for her?
I think this goes right along with the presentation, and also the presentation that was made, so.
Yeah.
Again, it's just a follow-through.
I was gonna say, we just heard about all of this, yeah, right, yeah. Super excited about that, too.
Okay, so we, in the Science Department, have a forensics course that's being proposed. The description for this course, it's an introductory science, this course covers introductory science processes, using the content of forensics as a vehicle to establish the appreciation of the scientific method, critical thinking, and problem-solving, the basic process of observing, collecting data, classifying, comparing, analyzing, informing hypotheses will be addressed using the concept of forensics. I like this one, again, I saw this in a former school that I worked in. Students who may not be as interested in science find themselves interested in this class. Covers all the concepts that need to be covered, but this, as Rebecca put it, the students don't even realize they're in a science class. It increases engagement, lots of hands-on learning, so I'm a big fan of this particular one.
If I were a kid, this would be my first choice for a science class.
I wanna take it, yeah. I was just gonna say, the only stipulation is I wanna be able to join the class.
Exactly, you're welcome.
I said that same thing.
Yeah, that is really cool.
This course has an excellent connection to a PCC program that we belong to in the summer program for middle and high school students, and it is the number-one received course in the summertime at Stoneville for the PCC program, so it's fantastic to see it. Thirty-three percent of our students are in STEM when they graduate, so this just really supports, and I think the intent here is to have potentially a lot of different students that are interested in seeing if this is an area that they wanna dabble in, and I think it's an opportunity. Hands-on learning is way to go.
Well, it's the exposure, right? Exposing our kids to different things where they may wanna pursue outside of high school, which is fantastic.
And that comment about exposure is really important, because we have a lot of students, as you know, in every high school in the Commonwealth and throughout the nation, who they say they wanna study blah, 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 they go to college, they bank sixty thousand dollars a year, and they find out one semester later that they're not interested. We're giving them the opportunity at a very near level to say, this isn't a little bit of what it's about, what it looks like, and that gives us...
I feel it's very relatable, too. As a former science teacher myself, a lot of students say, like, you know, biology content or chemistry content, they're like, how does this apply to real-life situations? But, you know, when it comes to forensic science, they have a certain amount of exposure to that, even if it's through TV.
Through CSI.
Familiarity, yeah.
Well, there's two, there's a positive and a negative. The positive is, we could have some students help out the Assistant Principals Office on figuring out something. The negative is, they may be finding out how to do it without being caught.
Well, no, I don't teach that, I promise. At least I'll teach that.
We appreciate that.
I'll take all the help I can get.
I mean, I was just whispering, this was my favorite course in college, quite far, and one that actually did well in, it surprised me. And it was like the last class I took, I'm like, I wish I had taken this like sophomore year, so I could have more of, you know, but it just didn't work out.
The nice thing about this course is, I've been teaching this for fifteen years, I've run it dual-credit with dual colleges, so it's an opportunity, not upcoming year, 'cause I need more time to prepare that relationship.
Articulation agreement.
It's a possibility, something.
Okay, so then we have a proposal for AP Computer Science Principles course. Purpose of this proposal is to update the Computer Science Program Studies by adding an advanced placement course and adjusting courses offered based on prerequisites and level of interest. I'm gonna have the descriptions, the description of the course. Carrie wants to say anything more?
I have, well, one, hi, I'm Carrie Martin. I do have like a syllabus that we, I printed off, that is a syllabus that I would call, it's called MOBILS, yes, T? So, it has all the units and everything, if you wanna look at it, and then I also have, it would alter, we're trying to change the pathway, so we want freshmen to take this Computer Science Fundamentals intro class, or that would be a first class you take, and then from then, you can specialize, so that's part of the proposal, too, if that goes through. I don't know if you wanna see any of it down here.
Yeah, definitely, if you have a...
So, this is another opportunity, as you know, we literally took a, not a gamble on Carrie herself as an educator, but the idea of our students interested in computer science, and we knew that they were. But this is an opportunity for our students to dabble in yet another area where they can take a look firsthand, and we do have students who are, you know, like I know our AP kids that challenge us academically as educators in the classroom, and this is another opportunity for a cohort of students to be able to go to another level, and be able to really look at how to look at computer science. We have kids in our buildings right now that can do almost anything on computers, and they can probably...
They can build a computer.
Yeah, they do.
So, it's an opportunity, it's just another opportunity for another cohort of kids. So, this is three different examples of three different cohorts of kids at Norton High School, that could be in any way, shape, or form, could become a niche for them. And that's something that, you know, I'm a big fan of, as you know, it's something that sometimes I wanna see us do more of, and to be quite honest, every year, we've added something, and it's been a positive. This is an opportunity really to stack a little bit of some niches for our kids.
And I think the focus on computer science is really important as well. The state has just made allowances to computer science courses as part of the math department and science, so that's something that's brand-new. So, the more offerings that we have for students that are super-engaged, I think the higher-level courses are still important for those students that are already at that really high level.
So, let's really look at what that means. We have a four-year graduation requirement for math, and a three-year graduation requirement for science, so that's a seven-year combination, if you look at it. This is an opportunity for students to really say, you know what, the computer science area is something really that allows me an area that I really do well in, and I wanna know more of at another level. It's not a competition, it's just another cohort, another way for students to take in. So, we could also, not necessarily maybe at the AP level, but at other levels with courses that Carrie has going, taking a look at students that, it is about building the computer, they're not gonna be the student that is gonna be the programmer, per se, but they're gonna be, and long-term, we can take a look at some of our students being involved in taking some certifications, which gets them, gets them in the door with employers for summer work, or work on the side.
And we've already had provided them opportunity to get Microsoft certified, so they can, some kids already can do that.
So, now that's piggyback on comments we've had, we've got the Business Tech Department, we've got computer science, we've got an opportunity for it to go around math and science. I wish I was back in high school, 'cause I know exactly what I'd be doing, right, instead of some of the classes that I did take. And again, for another kid, it might just be they want humanities courses, they want English or social studies. We have that, right, and probably are gonna have even more of it.
So, for these, if they were to take a class, they have to decide whether it satisfies their science requirement or their math requirement. One class couldn't satisfy both, right?
Correct.
And then, the next year, if they took something else, they could flip it to the other requirement that they need.
And so, the question becomes, where does the student wanna go? So, you have some students who after Algebra II, they've done with math, they don't wanna do anymore. I love Algebra II, I'm not against Algebra II, I don't want Mary.
She will hunt you down.
For some students going into, into multiple science and report computer science classes, or go into the Business Tech, because they wanna do the Chapter Seventy Four with the computer science, they have that wrote down. Very exciting.
I mean, looking back, I mean, I worked for one of the large technology companies, I'd be much more ahead if I'd started school.
What's the call? Another day where they come back with a loan line, I think. Oh, we had this, all of his is four years ahead. I'm a little bit behind. They're fine, they ended up being fine, but there's also another AP class called AP, what's it, Java? Yes, I've heard of this, too, but we're picking the computer science principles first.
A lot of them. Okay, so, in the music department, the new courses are dependent on us getting a new music teacher.
So, the budget will reflect an additional one-point-oh music teacher for the high school, and a shift of a point-five music teacher from the Yale School to the middle school. So, in other words, we'd be hiring one-point-five music teachers for next year. The budget proposal you will get will reflect that. One would go by allowing Dr. Vayaka to go full-time to the middle school, which becomes the fee de system for the high school. The high school now would have two full-time teachers, again, more chorus, more band, and so on, and I'll let you guys explain that. And then, the back check on the other side is that the Yale School would not lose a teacher, it would still pick up the same half-time teacher that it has now. That's why it's a one-point-five...
So, just explain this again.
You just need to identify...
So, Yale, Yale would have a point-five...
Point-five, which is what it has now.
Right.
Because Dr. Vayaka goes Yale, then he goes to the middle school. He now moves full-time to the middle school, one-point-oh. That means we have to backfill the Yale School that's point-five.
Right, it's point-five, and one more full at the high school.
Right, 'cause right now, we have one full-time Yale at the high school.
Correct.
And then, we approve these, and we don't get that in our...
We have, we have, we will present alternative routes to the school committee to consider based upon the budget that we give in the town.
And it's also a benefit for the Yale School as well, because right now, their music schedule is tied to the middle school's music schedule, 'cause Dr. Vayaka has to be there for the special music blocks there, so it makes it really challenging to get the band and the chorus in at the Yale School, plus the general music classes, so that would give us a little more flexibility.
There is no, and I say this respectfully to the entire high school staff, so I don't wanna, you know, there is incredible excitement about the music program. Let me let you, let me let you know this, I am getting emails from students, they are seeing me in the hallway, not only talking about their teacher that they have that's been agreed hire, but also, they want to see more options.
And I just think it has to be more of a sustainable model.
It has to be sustainable, you cannot do it with one teacher.
Math will tell you, and anyone performing will tell you, that to teach all the musical legibles, chorus, band, and all the extracurricular responsibilities is, you know, you're preparing somebody to completely burn out.
Can I tag on to that, too? It's more than that, too, all the needs that these students have, and all the things that they're really interested in, engaged in, I can't tell you how many kids come, so I do offer piano here. It was today, I was doing some math workouts with the drag students, 'cause, you know, I was just saying... And they said, hey, is there a piano offering here? I'm like, we don't, you know, we can't do that just now. Is there, can you teach guitar here? We don't have that now. Recording arts, well, we don't have that either right now, we just don't have time. And jazz band, they really need jazz music.
Right.
We have everything, exactly.
So, the proposals, we don't have to go through each of them, 'cause I know you can read, but the proposals are all reflective of that teacher, and then the specializations that we know the students are very much interested in. That's number one. Number two, the staffing that needs to go with it, we're gonna have to support this in order for it to happen.
Absolutely.
So, that's a commitment that we wanna make, and unless something really happens, you know, that's a commitment I wanna make to them. Number three, you'll be hearing about looking at our policy on how to provide lessons to students, starting upper elementary going through high school, because that's something that most of our kids, and I'll give you a perfect example, my daughter has to travel to another town to pay someone else to get a music lesson. It's time for us to have that discussion about bringing a well-rounded group of people to support not only our music teachers, but other people who can help us with these individual cases, and utilize our buildings after school, and do it right here at the one instead of somewhere else.
Great, just ask intro to band instruments, which ones are you thinking could...
So, that was kind of the caveat of that, you know, people are saying, like, can I take a piano course through that?
So, would that be student-driven, once they got in there? What are you interested in learning, or would it be a certain things that you had, this is what we're gonna teach?
Yeah, so the intention is an on-ramp to join a band, so they would say, I wanna take trumpet, or I'm really interested in trombone, for example. And once they're there, we might happen to say, alright, you're taking trumpet, try a trombone, see if that's better for you. Try a tuba, see if that's interesting.
So, it's student-driven more than curriculum?
Right, and we'll group by two, or I do a duet together, and if they can pack it, if they're really, you know, catching on, we'll say, here's the band music for the concert, and if they can prepare even one piece for the concert, just shoot one in right into the concert, and play with the band, too. So, that would be the idea.
I have to say, this was one thing that I was really excited to see in the packet, everything has been great, but I'm happy to see this, because when I was the school committee rep for the middle school, I'm now the high school as of this year, I went to a Memorial Day concert, and I was blown away at how incredible that the instructor was, the students were, I mean, it was, it was powerful, thank God I had sunglasses on, because I was like, I cannot believe, you know, I know, of course, shocking, I crap. I'm shocked, I know.
So, that's a perfect example of why this is on the table, right? First of all, we wanna take the direction of somebody who's part of a team that's very good at what they do, it's almost a brand-new team over the last couple of years. Ms. Kuchar at the middle school is the veteran, basically, everybody else has been with us, is new over the last four or five years, or last two or three years, actually. That's number one. Number two, we know that students that are involved in music, it doesn't matter if they're recording, or if they're learning, playing, they academically strive, this is another, well, right, well, every other course we approved tonight, or you looked at tonight, going right down that avenue of a niche for kids, who, this is the outlet, this is that place where that left side of the brain, or right side, I can't remember now, it's left side of it, is utilized and brought forward and balances as the right side, because this is how they do it. You know, there are studies that support that kids in band, 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 not even these individual courses, in band, have a higher success rate, both on state assessments, SATs, and college placement, than in all of the other activities that they do.
Yeah.
And so, this is an opportunity, after many years of cuts to this department, to begin a small way of bringing it back.
Well, I was just gonna say, I feel like after so many cuts, I think it's now time that we really need to focus on this. I've heard wonderful things about, I found the other child at the high school, so I've heard wonderful things about you and how you're really engaging the kids, and how to get them interested in this stuff. I'm hoping my son can learn how to play the guitar, that we've not had a touch, but I think it's important, you know, we have all these kids in the middle school, and then what happens when they get to high school, because we've had so many cuts, and it's time that... Well, I think it would waste not use his talents. Absolutely.
I mean, I can tell you that I've walked into chorus practice and seen, you know, offensive tackles from the varsity football team, having really enjoyable times singing chorus songs, or basketball players, you know, kids that you would never associate really with the music program, being really engaged with the music program, and I mean, it's been super impressive to me.
There actually was a video circulating where it was a course, 'cause some of the kids that were performing, I was like, what are they doing with, and it was sticks on the chair? That was phenomenal. I mean, that circulated all over Facebook, and I was like, oh my God, that is the coolest, it was a different group of kids. I know, I'm taking a long time, but...
No, but...
He wants to joke, he's doing sticks on the chair.
I don't know, I don't know that you could do that.
Usually after some phone call, when you guys, what are you doing about this? And the holiday concert, I don't know if any of you were there, but...
We had a school committee meeting, we're gonna be talking about the spring.
It was, we have a lot of people wanting to know...
We're gonna fix that, right?
Yes.
Yes. I just have a question, why is concert band highlighted?
So, concert band, we wanna change that to a level full-year course, so we'll count towards a student's GPA, but also, students who wanna continue to take concert band won't be experiencing the same curriculum, like, we'll have all the same students, or I should say, students of all different levels in concert band at once, right? So, like, you achieve concert band one, you move to concert band two, and then three, and then four, instead of having everybody in the same class.
So, the difficulty with the leveled courses, from what I understand, and what was this, Thompson has told me, if you have a leveled course, you can't re-enroll it. So, if we have the same concert at the end, we can only have students take it once, and they can't come back in.
Okay.
So, this is a way to say it's a leveled course, and people can continue to take it here and right here.
And it'll meet the needs of the individuals, so like, if somebody is far beyond another person, they could be having concert band three or four, and so forth.
And don't forget, we passed the fine arts graduation requirement, so another reason why adding another teacher, and we doing our program of studies in the music environment is that it does become part of our fine arts requirement, of which I will tell you, the guy at Dr. Vayaka will say we don't have enough. So, adding that second position in more courses with some differences is gonna be, it's gonna actually help our, for lack of a better phrase, other courses, 'cause what it does is it's gonna take those, that schedule, and elongate it with another department, so now, you've got art with two, you've got music with two, you've got business with four, five, and give them the number now, four, and so on, so it's gonna allow for some of those core classes, for lack of a better phrase, 'cause I think it's all core, to have less students, because it's gonna elongate this schedule.
So, how does this work for timing, right? So, if we're looking to hire somebody new, we've gotta get to the budget?
Yeah, so we, we are going, we need to make the commitment to the high school as part of the program of study selection process, figure out how many kids are lining up for these courses and wanna take these courses, which we think is gonna be a respectful number, and then look at that, and then make a commitment to hiring the teacher, so that we're not doing what we do with computer science, which is, we lost a science teacher, made an internal decision to go with computer science, and then found a teacher, and then had to put kids into that system in August. We wanna do it now, in our office, to have that selection, it's a lot less work for everybody, it makes the summer a lot easier in terms of the cleanup of the schedule. So, I made a commitment to, Vinny Cersei on the phone the other day, that my goal is, as soon as I get some numbers from the town, and I don't have those yet, but I will be getting those any day, then that gives me a assurance through Matt's office on how far apart are on our minimum budget versus adding new positions in the budget, and then other potential scenarios, including school choice.
So, we're looking at for next year, though?
Correct, September implementation.
All of these are, aren't they, all September?
All, all, all provided to students to sign up, to see if we have students who wanna do these things, and so on.
So, unfortunately, if there's a class with this only, which I can't imagine any of these so far, but if somebody only signed up two kids, then would...
Correct, so, correct.
That's what we do often, like, for example, we don't always necessarily run AP Environment every year, like, depending on student interest and signups, maybe it takes a year off, and then it's back.
Yeah, I mean, you could try it the next year.
Because once it's in, then we don't, we don't take it out.
We don't drop courses.
They don't have to sign up.
Sometimes when we drop courses, is if we have a scheduling issue, if we go, like this year, like, we can all complain about the schedule, and some of, I'm actually about to read a number of essays from students, and one of our teachers' classrooms about just not liking the schedule, and I said I would read them, and I'm gonna read them, and I'm actually gonna respond to every student. But, the thing that is better about this schedule, A, is kids have more opportunities to do more different things, especially as we add other things. The negative of it is, we have to change our teaching methodology to not be about a ninety-minute class. So, that's, so the homework that the kids are complaining about, and, you know, trying to get through the class, and in some cases, even being given a packet, finish this, because we gotta get through it before the mid-year, those are discussions that are adult discussions that need to take place, and it's a work in progress.
Yeah.
It's a change, it was done, it saved jobs, at the end of the day, it saved jobs, because we wouldn't have been able to run last year's schedule with it.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so, yeah, lastly is wellness, so Nicole couldn't hear tonight, but she wanted me to read from some notes that she put together. So, she says, after speaking with many stakeholders and students in the Norton High School community, it was made clear that the need for a full-time, a full-year help class is more important than ever. We believe a full-year help class can better educate students while driving deeper into important topics, the growing vaping epidemic, the need for social-emotional skilled helping, and the need for health literacy are key reasons why we need to start prioritizing health. The addition of a full-year wellness course for grade nine students, and several additional physical educational levels, are dependent on the addition of a full-time health teacher. The course would consist of skills-based health curriculums, sorry, that was a recent point.
Want me to read it? Want me to read it?
Students will learn skills such as analyzing influences, assessing valid health information, interpersonal communication, decision-making, goal-setting, health-enhancing behaviors, and advocating for personal, family, and community health. They will then learn about the topics of mental health, immune disorders, suicide prevention, stress and time management techniques, alcohol and drug education, community and prevention of dating violence, bullying and cyberbullying, and nutrition. The ultimate goal of skills-based health is to have students apply the skills smarter than the different topics that are being covered. And then if that full-time health teacher gets approved, there's also a proposal for changing the elective wellness offerings to the 10th and 11th, 10th, 12th grade students. And the way Nicole said it to me, she said she wants to increase student choice and student voice. You know, some students just don't like phys ed, they just don't like it. And so to have more in the way of choice, she's hoping to increase engagement. So as you look through these, take that and keep that in mind. When students do choose these elective courses, they are term courses, so basically you couple them, so you would have a term one, term two course that you would select from and one would have to, have to be one that is based on physical activity. So walking for fitness and then maybe life after north.
I really liked the life after north.
Yeah, it sounds really good.
There's a lot of uncertainty with kids, seniors especially now, they aren't going to college and they don't really have much of a plan.
I was actually, when I was, when I was reading through these, you know, I, I almost want this to be a required class.
Me too.
You know, and I, I think back to high school, granted, I'm not going to say how many years I've been out, but, you know, the classes that were an inconvenience like home ec and things like that, now we're getting, we're circling back around that, we're reintroducing them because they were taken away and now, now there's a vested interest for a lot of people, like, as the parent of a senior, I'm like, "You don't know how to write a check." I mean, you don't know what taxes and it's just one of those things, I mean...
It's messing with anybody.
You know, you're just, you're, now it's like, as a parent, now you have to teach them how to go out and be an adult. Now it's, you know, it's come full circle from, from, from three years ago that I graduated.
I can say for sure, I mean, there'll be a lot of these, those choices that will be popular. Yoga one, I think, will be especially popular. Life after Norton, I think, fitness and conditioning for the athletes or for somebody, maybe their kid that wants to get in shape or something, you know?
So this is, I want to call it number two because we quote with Happy Happy, this is part of the support for the high school. There's really right now, in terms of new positions or actually the statement of positions, is this is also part of a 2.0 FTE. This, this program recommendation you're going to be seeing is a 1.0 wellness teacher for the middle school and a 1.0 wellness teacher for the high school.
How many are at the middle school?
Right now, there's only two teachers at the middle school and wellness is embedded in because we cut the position last year. So this is bringing the position back so that we can have wellness. We have a full comprehensive, as you know, our wellness committee that's been working. We want to make sure that this issue of drugs and alcohol, one of the funnest things I've done as a superintendent in a long time is I've been emailing all of our students in grade six and 12, getting bombarded with emails every day because I've been doing the question of the day, you know, what, what's the number one chemical in marijuana, for example, was THC.
You've got some answers, I saw.
I did, I, I'm averaging over 30 answers a, a day and it's making relationships...
Are those the same kids?
Uh, no, every, every day there's been a different kid getting added. I'm over 100 kids that have participated in the three days. And it's high school and middle school, a lot more high school than middle school, but the, the middle school kids don't check their email as...
It's nice to see too, a lot of these courses are exactly what was talked about in the conference. So we know we've got the social, emotional guarding problem, now we have to get the mindfulness in there so we know how to go.
And I'm glad, I'm so, so happy that you said that because this is not, this is about student choice and student voice. And what our kids are telling us is that they want to be in these types of classes, they want to be in wellness. I mean, I met with the, with our PSA last year, a year before last, two years ago now, actually, where they said, "Relationships is what we see as a problem between, doesn't matter if it's a gay couple or a straight couple, they're seeing things in relationships in the hallways or after school or Friday night that they're like, kids need to know about relationships. Vaping has come out of nowhere, right? We've got a lot of work to do in that area."
That program, that girl head would work perfectly.
Exactly.
If we didn't get, I would like to see it in the middle school because...
I mean, I want to know more information.
And telling, and telling kids not to do it, telling kids not to do it doesn't work. You have to give them good information and, and as part of the learning experience, they're going to make decisions. So again, this is part of a two-part process of making sure that student voice at the secondary level, six to 12, around those topics that are critical topics. And wellness right now is exactly that, wellness. It's, one classroom could be doing a lot of discussion about vaping and drugs while another classroom is talking a lot about relationships. We're going to have to fill that out a little bit and I, and I think we have the teachers that can teach it, but we also have to backfill in order for that to be able to happen.
So can we just, can I just talk about that point? So wellness is wellness and P E are together, correct?
Yeah, so, so, correct. So we call it wellness as a district and, and we have a state requirement of physical education. There is no state requirement for health. There's only a, 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 a physical education requirement. A student must take health, excuse me, physical education every year by state statute, right? It is not defined by time. A kid could take physical education tomorrow, first period from eight to nine, and they're done for the year. There is no time allocation for it on the state law. It just says that it has to be taken. Okay, so it's like US history has to be taken, but it doesn't have to be passed, even though all of us make it local requirements. So the issue here is we, we look at, we look at wellness as this encompassing issue that there is physical activity, as Lisa stated, that has to then go with something that they can take, not physical activity, but something around the body. So they're talking about...
They can learn about the physical activity.
Exactly. They can learn about the physical activity, they could learn about nutrition, they could learn about any of those, any of those types of things.
I'll ask you after the meeting, so we can think, I just want to know what we currently have, what we, what we need, but I can talk to you later.
I think like this can solve other problems too, like character education and things like that, that, that'll be embedded in that, for how it sounds to me.
So is that all, that's all of them? Okay.
So you have to take a vote to approve the course proposals as written unless you have a recommendation for something else.
Does anybody have any comments, questions, concerns? Okay, do we have a motion to approve the course additions to the Norton High School Program of Studies for 1920 as written in the summary of new course proposals at Norton High School? Second, all those in favor? Hi. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you for taking your time.
Yeah, since, yeah, since most of you guys are here from the high school...
Lisa, it's probably for everybody on the way in tomorrow.
Oh, yeah. I was going to ask for something else on the way out.
Oh, well, that pays a lot of work.
I think we just all agree that we're doing that.
Thank you all for coming and thank you for the work that you guys are doing.
We've got one more.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, everybody.
So, um, thank you. So I think we'll just kind of go to that next, the vote to approve Norton High School Music Field Trip to New York?
It's going to be great.
Think you're up. Just, just a little information.
We didn't run the trip last year because of student interest. The year before that, it was, been many years before that also was very popular. We tried to keep the cost down as much as we could. We all have payments from all 37 students right now.
What's the cost right now, Matt?
$265 per student. And we've gotten assistance for several students. But everyone is completely paid up, so we're ready to go. We just got the menus for Ellen Stardust Cafe, so we're going to be taking menu orders for everybody.
I get to go for it.
I would say, do you need any more?
I know, I know.
We would love to take more people.
Is this a day trip? Is it a day trip?
We'll leave at 5:15, we'll be back at 10:30, 10:15.
Never happened, man, that's a good time.
So one day.
It's a good trip.
We'll see. Being honest, it's not going to happen. But that's, that's what we got on our agenda anyway, so.
So how many kids are already signed up and paid for?
Thirty-seven. Signed and paid.
Yeah, and we, and we had some situations that worked through our colleagues, we, every, every kid is able, who wanted to go was able to go.
Norton Music Parents paid for a few and I think the superintendent and, yeah, there's been some processes, our office still carries some situations as well.
That's great.
Very difficult for that.
Any other?
What day of the week is that?
It's Wednesday, April 3rd.
You just showed me.
Oh, one more tie-in I thought I'd mentioned. You can go, we would love to take more people on, honestly, it would be a great time. The other time that I'm really excited about, we're seeing Wicked and on the, on the concert May 16th, 7:00 PM, one of the program things we're going to do for the chorus is add a song for alumni to come up and sing. So the last song we do is going to be "For Good" from Wicked. And so anybody who's been a member of the chorus, if you're 80 years old, 30, is welcome to come up on stage and sing with us "For Good" from the musical Wicked. So it's going to be a nice tie-in and meaningful for the students too, really simple.
So you, that's the concert, the high school concert you said, May 16th?
Yes, 7:00 PM. That's the date, that's the date we've got, yeah, Thursday, May 16th.
Let me see that date.
Yeah, I'd like to make sure.
Is it really? No, we don't have any.
Calendar, so I hope we're good, all right.
Does anybody else have any questions about the New York High School Music Field Trip?
I'll check on the number of chaperones.
So is the time six?
Three more, any of you want to go?
So do we have a motion to approve the Norton High School Music Field Trip to New York? One, second, all those in favor? Hi. Have fun.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you so much, Matt. Thank you.
I love Ellen Stardust Diner.
I brought it to Europe.
What do you recommend for food?
I brought kids to the aquarium.
A chicken salad and I think my kids got like a burger.
Pretty good.
Anything's good.
And hopefully it's not a good chaperone.
Singers are amazing. Okay, so just, do you have a band? All right, vote to appoint your assistant principal, the attendance officer for Norton Middle School.
So this vote is one that you have taken, this vote is one that you have to turn over again. This is, this is more of a court requirement so that when Greg goes in front of the magistrate or the judge, he's got a letter that basically says that he's been appointed as the assistant officer for the, for attendance officer for the school.
Yep.
So, right now, it's, it should be the assistant principal when it happens. So I just need a vote that you appoint, my recommendation is that you appoint Greg as the attendance officer for Norton High School for the 2018-19 school year.
Is there a motion for that? Second? All those in favor? Hi.
All right.
All right, good, thank you.
I was hoping I'd get a badge.
We'll give you that.
We could do it, we, we, we do it anytime from, I'm, I'm going to throw out a number, but I, I know for a fact we've done it as much as half a dozen times in a, in a year.
It's just...
And, yep, it's, it's basically taking a look at trying to get the family, it's, it's a school, family court together, trying to make work together to get the students, at the end of the day, that's what we...
I mean, one thing that I want to do is take preventative measures and meet ahead of time, like, you know, a kid has nine absences, let's say, you know, and the number that they don't want to get to is 11, you know, I want to have a meeting with the parents, the kid, the guidance counselor, you know, and I want to come up with strategy ahead of time. I'm having one tomorrow, actually, with a kid and, and the guidance counselor, parents, you know? Because I feel like, you know, nobody wants to have a CRA filed on them, you know, it's just a scary process for all involved, you know?
It's a lot, it's a little bit of a last, a last resort, but the proactive is to also have the assistant principal be able to sit across from the parents and say, "We are